comprehensively. And we actually just kicked off just yesterday, had a three hour workshop with them. And really proud of our first step wasn't about my school, your school and diving into the data. It was really big picture about what the vision and goal is. It was about what's right for all students and is a very highly engaged, activated group of folks that looked at all sorts of topics about the sorts of curriculum, about how to support staff and retain staff in the districts, which is hard. Clearly coronavirus was brought to bear in the discussions. But so this focus group summit really being an internally oriented group, these are the the folks whose day job is to serve the community. The educators, some folks from county government, some elected officials as part of the the focus group summit. And as we move forward, they're going to be doing the heavy design work or co-design work where we look at all the data and dream up the different options and scenarios that will get embedded through the community. So the second committee, the stakeholder advisory committee or kind of SAC, we refer to it as an acronym, is that that committee that represents and embodies the community side of the equation, folks groups on it as institution, stakeholder advisory committee as community. This is a cross sectional community or committee that has representatives from all parts of Baltimore County that is comprised of students, parents, teachers, community members. This really gets into the users and those that are affected in their local communities by the decisions that are made as part of the capital program. And their, their role is to be a sounding board to review the data and understand the same data that the the planning committee, the folks group summit is using. And also chairs of those will attend, participate in some of the workshops so that there's clear transparency and they can in turn report back in their own voice, what they've observed in terms of the planning and how they've participated in the process. Now it doesn't stop there. This is a committee that's large in size, but certainly doesn't represent every single person within Baltimore County. So we, we worked into the design of this process for opportunities for the community to participate at large, open invitation, anyone who wants to come by virtue of our virtual technologies. And the first one actually is tonight. Community form one is really informational by design. If someone wasn't aware of it or was unavailable on this first night, it's really the opportunity to make sure that we get the message out there before a community forms two and three, where most of the real heavy engagement happens. So that's kind of some of the facets of our process and timeline. So the results from phase one, I'll just give you a quick overview. Some of you might've heard some of this through conversations or seen some of the reports before. But it's based on those three pillars. And we had a benchmarking aspect to it. I mentioned earlier, the three pillars of study. Educational adequacy, equity, facility condition, capacity utilization. They all have very objective measures, common yard sticks, as I mentioned, to equitably benchmark each school's needs against one another. We married these three metrics into a singular index that we call kind of the aggregate need index. That is a weighted formula based on the voice of 22,000 stakeholders in Baltimore County by virtue of a survey that was conducted. The results was more or less on par, not almost a third, a third, a third towards the three pillars. But the stakeholder weight for educational adequacy and equity is tipped a little higher as dictated by the your stakeholders. And then a little less on facility condition and capacity utilization on par. We've, we're really proud of the fact that we were able to get that. Despite the pandemic, we're able to engage even early in the, our experience with the pandemic. It a level of engagement that could weigh in on the results. And as you're seeing with phase two, we've really upped the game and are going through a very intentional outreach process. So the role results of the benchmarking exercise for the high schools up on the screen here. And what we've got are those three measures. You can see kind of in the blue, the green and the teal sort of color for capacity. You can see by the colors here and the numbers that are on there and the rankings that the needs at each school is a little different around the way. But then when you use the weighting of the 35, 32, 33 scores and weigh it into your aggregate need score, there certainly are different classes of need that are out there. Some of your newer and more recently renovated schools are towards the bottom, less need. And those that are older are more crowded and might have the sorts of designs in the building to support all the educational adequacy are floating towards the top. So how is this data used? Fine and good. You have numbers and all that, but really, really bakes into how we do planning. First, it could help define what the criteria might be for the sorts of options that are on the table for these different facilities. Second, it can also help define any sorts of alterations to the buildings, not just in terms of fixing what's broken, but also finding space and creatively adapting and modifying spaces to bring the new sorts of design features that we do when we design schools even into an older building. And finally, the sequencing of the projects over time and all of its base on the notion that the greater the need, the higher priority. The biggest need and I'm not going to walk through all three of the metrics and stuff like that. The one that really stands out for high schools was that of capacity. And it's no surprise here, and those of you involved with schools at all know that there is, there are certainly areas of crowding that have been experienced for several years and the projections of enrollment show that that's really going to to become acute within the next several years. And it's something we've looked very closely at in terms of our recommendations. The map here shows Baltimore County and the color coding, both of the dots for each school and the regions represent kind of the average utilization over there. You can see by the orange and red, that means over a hundred percent. That means there is a kid for every single seat that's available in those schools, in many cases well beyond that. That sort of crowding is an equity issue inherently, but also is just educationally a challenge as well as safety and other issues. We know that that's a very acute issue. When you're talking about areas where there's not even a seat at a neighboring school where maybe you could solve things with changing your programs or maybe attendance boundaries and things like that. There's no seats to be had even within the regions in those areas. And that's where we really focus some of the very short end of our recommendations. So the findings in terms of dollars and cents. You might've heard before, we, we've assessed that just at the high schools alone, we're looking at over a billion dollars worth of need among those three pillars. It's roughly a third, as you can see by the pie chart there for each of the three pillars. This is a seven year forecast, which is consistent with the way the state of Maryland likes to look ahead and do capital planning. It does include an incremental cost for the potential of relief schools at the high school level. By that, I mean, instead of just growing the schools larger and larger, perhaps there's the opportunity based on the shortage of capacity to build an entire new school and have to re-boundary and build it either as a neighborhood school or thematic school sort of thing, that sort of potentiality. It's something that we've recommended to be considered over the balance of this project. And we did accommodate that cost in there. It doesn't include land procurement because at this point it's a little premature to know exactly where it ought to be and what might be available. But what it does not include in the 1.2 billion are unfunded replacement projects that haven't passed into what we're going to talk about in a minute being legacy projects. So comparing that to your budget, your high schools represent about a third of your square feet in Baltimore County schools. On average, there's about 140 million per year that's allocated between state and county funding towards your capital program. Presuming that roughly a third of your portfolio square feet wise is high schools. Taking that and extrapolating it down, your high schools would be represented in the area by this dotted HS circle right here versus your entire CIP budget. Here's all of the needs of the high schools, the 1.2 billion dollars. So you can just visually see what we're talking about. It would take 27 years of your, at your current funding levels to take care of all those needs of condition, adequacy and capacity at the high school level. So great news out there, there's a lot of talk about House Bill one, adult to learn act. And it's possibility of being passed very soon, which could be a game changer. That 27 years could be reduced down to 15 years, which you get into just the human scale thinking in terms of what is possible. That's something that you can think of a cycle of students where every high school might have their needs addressed than that timeframe of a, you know, a generation of students. Now, that said, that money isn't free money. It does come from the state and comes from county as well, just like the other proportion. And it does mean that locally would be, we require an investment to do so, but it could be a game changer in terms of the educational fabric of your county. One note here, I mentioned earlier that the unfunded replacement projects out there. Were these included and acted upon at each hundred million plus type investment does delay just by virtue of cash flow, all other projects at the expense of a singular site project for about two to three years for each time that's done. So this speaks to the need for prioritization. The 1.2 billion kind of broken into five tiers of priority. You can kind of see here, you know, the sorts of obvious notions about health and security towards the top. That acute capacity shortage that I mentioned is included in that. I, I would have included the 156 million in category two here. But we did break off some and put it a lower priority only due to the notion that there are some opportunities because you can't spend all of that all in one time. That there's some due diligence could be done in terms of what the preferences of the communities are, what sorts of programs ought to be accommodated? How large of size is tolerable by the communities? And also looking at land opportunities that would be required for potential relief schools. So we laid out our recommendations kind of over timeline graphically like this. And it has different components to it. And they're right out of the chute, kind of looking at last year and into this year, keep doing what you're doing great. And that's taking care of your assets that you do have Baltimore County government and B C P S ought to be committed for being very proactive. The number of, let me go back, that priority slide I had a second ago. Priority ones, these are the sorts of things that are very important to take care of. Nine million dollars for a portfolio as vast as Baltimore County Public Schools of what is it? 170 campuses? That's, that's very small. What that means is the eye is on the ball and your staff really should be commended for taking care of the assets as they should. So back to the recommendations, continue doing that. That's kind of an annual cycle, call it systemic repair programs that are done very strategically. And now informed with all of the assessment data that we provided, there's a whole new scale of prioritization and things that of information that's updated and current and forward leaning. So then we get into all of the other major projects beyond just taking care of your upkeep and maintenance. It's coming down the pike. First category I mentioned earlier, legacy projects. As planners, we very, very seldom arrive with the school system. And they've been waiting around for the sage wise master planner to show up and tell them what to do. You guys have been carrying on with business and there's a constant litany of projects, just like just about everywhere I work. And one, not a cardinal rule, but it's something that we advocate for and is certainly something that is important here in Baltimore County is the notion of fulfilling promises made. So with the notion of legacy projects and commitments, projects that are already partially funded to get those complete. Now in phase two, you're going to see more of the middle schools and elementary schools with the schools of the future program. There'll be several projects that'll show up in that sort of category. At the high school level, there's really only one, and that was the Lansdowne project. Beyond that, it gets into, we're looking at the critical needs that are out there, starting with capacity. We believe that there are some additions that can be strategically placed in those areas that have the greatest shortage of capacity in the very near term. And as I mentioned before, kind of I prioritize things and broke them into two buckets. They have a few other schools that are in areas where there's some potential for some additional due diligence around, we know we need capacity, but what ought that look like? Do we have the opportunity not just to solve capacity, but some program issues by creating space that's in specialized and flexible spaces that can support visions for the future? And because knowing that we have the balance of the my past process to do that sorts of engagement and, and polling of your stakeholders and get their voice on the, into the register that there's kind of that group three that goes beyond that. And then it gets to the balance of the schools. Capacity is not your only issue. You've got also educational adequacy and condition needs that need to be addressed. And when I say the term like renovation sorts of work, many people are immediately put off and dismissed that renovation just means fixing broken stuff, coat of paint, roofs, and that sort of thing. But what we've worked closely with your stakeholders on throughout the process is envisioning how these buildings can be transformed through renovation work that can be significant alterations in a way that the community can be very proud. And while maybe the bones and original structure might still stand that the sorts of spaces that are in there and the face that's expressed into the communities with the facade and grounds of the facility can be refreshed to a point that folks would presume that it's a new school. So we've gone through a sequence and the, the order of the projects that they're laid out is consistent with that data driven approach with the benchmarking that I showed earlier. So that was phase one. That presentation was made back in fall and we know that the CIP process is informed by it and that's very present at this point. And what we're looking at in phase two is completing and we're very close to completing the the study of the middle schools and elementary schools will have the three pillar data and benchmarking for all those schools along with those cost estimates. We had 1.2 billion on the high schools. We're going to see somewhere, you know, additional multiple of that for the elementary schools and middle schools when that analysis is complete. But right now, this week, we've kicked off the, the planning aspects and engagement aspects that transcend what we're able to do right at the very early stages of the pandemic. I really kicked off an intentional process with those committees that I described before. Yesterday we kicked off the focus groups on it, the visiting session. Tonight we kick off the community forum informational. That's tonight at seven, so that's kind of why I'm on the front end of your agenda. So that community members have the opportunity to see a really cool class project video that some Baltimore County students participated in. Baltimore County government has some tremendous talent to produce a video that's of very professional quality. And will be posted on the website so that stakeholders can understand the importance of this process and how to weigh in. Community forums two and three are very critical and that's why we want to have that first one and make sure we get that splash. People that missed it have the opportunity to catch up. And it's designed like this. Community form two is not talking about the names of any schools, not talking about your school, my school or specific data, maybe overview of data, but it's not really getting at what the outcomes will be. It's really about decision making criteria, about values, about principles, what's important, what ought to be there for all students within Baltimore County. Community form three, and by the way, that can be formed too. Includes a live poll that happens right there at the event. Plus it's, it's extended and open for all interested parties who were not able to attend for a period of time afterwards. All of that information will be compiled and disaggregated and studied and analyzed so that we have a clear understanding of the different preferences in terms of trends and outlier cases. So we know what your diverse communities value in different areas. It's only after that event that the real planning work will be done with the focus group summit. We'll have a very facilitated process where we're using all the data collected that we collected and assessed of your buildings, but also the, the inferences from the community surveys from community form one, which is a second round from our previous surveys from last summer to really inform the sorts of outcomes. So the work that they're going to do isn't going to be aha, we've got the answers to all your prayers. Here's the plan, community, what do you think? That's not the way we operate. We're actually going to devise a series of different scenarios and options. This enables all the stakeholders in the community by virtue of the SAC that's going to be very deeply informed in the process and annotate some of those items brought forward to the community at large, so they can see the work of the SAC and their peers weighing in on it and how they've looked at the different benefits, the different challenges, what the costs are related to these different scenarios. So they can weigh in and then take a poll at that point. And now we are indeed talking about schools and data and that sort of thing. And the final decision making by the focus group summit that will facilitate will be done with another pulse of the community where they're actually going to weigh in on all these different scenarios and options where they can say, look, option A, option B, option C. Say whether they strongly support, support, neutral, disapproved, disapproval. Those sorts of measures consistently and disaggregated by different areas of the community. By the individual's role and relationship with the school system and with this ethnicity and different perspectives, so that we really get a good sense of where the stakeholders' values lie. And finally, the community form four is after the final presentation that will go back before board and council as validated by both of those committees I mentioned earlier. But to honor the community that will have weighed in and spent their time participating in this, wondering what the outcomes are. They'll actually be able to see the final results and confirmation of what they've participated in the process. So that's what the my pass plan is to get us through about June or so with documentation and such that will result probably in another presentation in front of, of board council and presumably this board towards the fall timeframe. I appreciate the opportunity to speak with you and if you wanted, Ed, I'd like to give you one opportunities or any sort of clues you might want to add on to this. And then any questions you might have.
Thanks, Paul. I'm just in sake of time, Mr. Chair, I'll turn it back over to you. Thank you.
Can I ask a question or is it?
Yes, yeah, sorry, I muted myself. Go ahead, Todd.
Yeah, I'm my wife's a teacher right now and as, as everyone knows, they're going through a unique transition back into school. And I don't know that we ever get back to what is, what we knew as traditional school. I know you talked a little bit about how you looked at that. But impact on distance between students, how many students never come back and they stay in a remote status? I guess the, you know, almost the, the death of homeschool, but school being homeschooled through the classroom and technology being used for teachers to be able to teach a student in his classroom and have somebody on a screen. Was that all included in this 1.2 billion dollars or?
So we're talking about the capital needs of the buildings to address kind of your normal status quo. Potentially there could be a lull that picks back up in time as a result of the pandemic. But we're not, we, we have to presume that eventually all the students within your community are going to wind up at school as they were before. Where we are looking through the lens of this, this current year that we're experiencing right now. But we're letting that be an informative point and not a trend trajectory point in terms of enrollment projections. But educationally, socially and emotionally, absolutely, this is being considered by the framers of the plan as evidenced in yesterday's vision in session. Or we didn't create a topic, we didn't want it to be a coronavirus discussion. Clearly it wound up in just about every facet of dialogue that we were involved in. I hope I addressed your, your question.
I, I think so, but as an executive of a bank, we're never going to be the same again in the bank like we're so, and I, I think that there is going to be a certain amount of that need for a computer to teach. That I think is a big capital change to the facilities that you know, there'll be a certain number of students that won't ever be in the classroom again. And I'm not educator, so I don't want to speak on something I don't have expertise. It just seems to me that that's just a cultural change that may never go back to what it was.
Absolutely. Well, in working with the superintendent and his team, we're keenly looking at what those, what that future might look like. There are a lot of things about getting back to normal that are very comforting. There are certain things, there's, there is a silver lining of potential of learning from some of the lessons learned. Some of the stuff like right now, we're able to communicate, I'm on another side of the country right now. And we're able to communicate and interact. We did a very interactive whiteboarding session with a lot of folks yesterday in a way that I know we can bring out to the communities. All that to say that there's some silver linings in terms of content delivery and engagement with students and finding different learning styles that can be supported by it. Speaking personally, I have a, a daughter who struggles with social anxiety. And I tell you what, she's really flourished during this timeframe. Same time, there's a lot of students that are really struggling. So these sorts of dialogues and discussions are at the forefront, you know, while we're, we are talking about buildings and and construction and those sorts of things. When I do a capital plan with the school system, we really get at the, the real core mission of what's happening educationally. And I know that the leadership is stepping up to the plate to engage in that front.
Scott, can I ask? Hey, Paul, how did you arrive at your proposed budget numbers? Did you? I assume you had to do a certain amount of design work to come up with some realistic numbers.
That's a great question, Mr. Heckman. We have customized cost estimators on our team and we had some preliminary conceptual design to come up with data driven parameters that would arrive at conceptual budgets without going to a lot of exhaustive expense on behalf of Baltimore County to do that sort of design work just on the hunch. The condition assessment, very parametrically driven. We had teams of architects, engineers to observe and document all those conditions driving at cost estimates. And in terms of what remedies are out there to fill those equity gaps out there, those are parametrically driven. They're kind of rough estimates to give you a rough order of magnitude to get going. Once you get closer to the point of implementation, that's where you do feasibility studies and the sort of work that'll help dial in on what the real scope and budget ought to be.
So do these rough estimates include contingencies or does Baltimore County carry?
Absolutely. We, we tried, I spent the first third or so of my career working in the actual management and implementation of construction projects. And what I learned from that is that when you put dollar values out there, think in terms of, you know, T T N L, tax title license, the whole nine, what's in it to be the full cost. And very intentionally included all the soft costs that'll have to be borne typically front ended by the county. The construction dollars coming later from the state and including contingencies on top of that. A great question.
And that's $20, $20.
That's correct.
Okay, so it doesn't include escalation. My, my last question is, I'm looking at the appropriation summary that we were given and it says basically the ask is $200 million a year. Starting with 2022, I think. But if I read your chart correctly, the recommendations for 2022 CIP to do group one and two, that was 250 million a year.
Mr. Heckman, this is Ed Blades, the director of budget and finance. The 200 million in the FY22 request ties back to the referendum amount. And it really is paying, you'll, you'll get into the detail of what is covered by that 200 million in Pete Dick's, Pete Dixit's presentation from the board of Ed with their budget request to you on February, February 4th. And those are all things that are active projects. It ties, it'll just going to tie back to schools for our future, Lansdowne, major maintenance roofs, another projects that'll tie back into that 200 million. So we're not even to the point yet where we can get into funding the recommendations of my pass.
Okay.
We still have to get caught up with, and the, and the state has to catch up to us with schools for our future projects and Lansdowne.
So you're saying it's two, 250 million on top of 200 million?
We would not be able to start my pass in FY22. So we're looking at earliest FY24 and that's still depending on funding from the state, the timing. And we'll get into that with this school's capital budget presentation.
But Lansdowne's in there, right? So there is kind of a Venn diagram overlap between.
Yes, yes, it is. Lansdowne is, Lansdowne is in the FY22 request for construction.
I'd like to ask one. The, I thought that the Dundalk-Sollers High School is near the top of the list because of capacity. It's a relatively new school. So I guess my question is, how did we so miss the mark on capacity that a school that's got to be one of the newest high schools in the county now needs to have additions? And what does that say about our planning process as we're planning all these other school projects? now needs to have additions? And what does that say about our planning process as we're planning all these other school projects?
Ed, I could hazard a guess, but it would be speculation because I wasn't around.
I could, I can only hazard a guess as well. I think that would be a great question for Pete Dixon.
Fair enough. Anybody else have a question? I want to thank?
Not a question, but like a comment. Thank you Scott. Paul, I'm Nancy Hafford, I'm the Chairwoman of the Baltimore County Planning Board. I really appreciate your time and effort on putting this, the information together. These are very challenging times and all of our children of Baltimore County are very, very important. So I greatly appreciate the work that your firm has done.
Thank you Ms. Hafford, appreciate the opportunity, it's really an honor to work with the team and your community.
Thank you.
So again, thank you, Mr. Mills, thank you, Mr. Blades for the presentation. With that, good luck on your next call at seven o'clock.
Absolutely. You will, look forward to being with you again.
So now I'd like to invite Mr. David Lincoln from the Department of Environmental Protection and Sustainability to make his presentation.
Thank you, sir. Madam Chair and other members of the planning board, I appreciate this opportunity. With me today, I'm the Director of the Department of Environmental Protection and Sustainability. And I have the Deputy Director, which is named Brady Locker with me, and he's going to slide while I do the talking.
Yep, just waiting for Chris to assign me the permissions to share my screen.
All right. And Chris, you could do it too if you wanted to yourself, if you want to do on the slides from your, from your side, you can do that if you wish.
I think I just got it.
All right. So again, I'm Dave Lykins, I'm the Director of the Department of Environmental Protection and Sustainability, and I promise not to say the word billion in my presentation. So Ed can relax a little bit. So here's a beautiful picture of our Bird River and I'm going to tell you a little bit about our department, how we spend money in the capital program and some new things that we do with. So go ahead Brady, let's next. So this is going to be a slide that's going to show you our department, the administration at the top, the members that we have at the bottom, we basically do two things in our department. The bottom three, the sections of our department on the left do development. The three on the right do projects related to the capital program and that's where we spend our money. And we spend about 20 or 30 million dollars a year doing capital programs related to state and federal permits that the county gets. In our stormwater section, that lower left, we get state mandated stormwater management, we do sediment control, we do grading. We have an environmental impact review section, which does the regulations for protection of water quality, streams, wetlands and flood plains. Does the forest state mandated Forest Conservation Act. It also reviews for the Chesapeake Bay Critic area, another state mandated regulation. Groundwater management section there does well in septic stuff, which is also given to us by the state. Then we come into these three sections that do capital projects. The Watershed Restoration Group does projects related to stream restoration. They do things with stormwater management ponds, upgrading them to newer technology. And they also do things related to shoreline projects. The Watershed Management Monitoring Section has watershed planners in it, it has a giant monitoring group because we have lots of monitoring requirements. We go out and test waters and streams all over the county. And then we have a forest management section, which plants a lot of trees. We have a goal this year of planting 5,000 trees. I think we're going to make it and I think we're going to up it next year and try to get even more. So this is what our department does, but those three groups on the lower right there are the ones that do most of the capital improvement projects for Baltimore County. So let's see the next slide. So these are the programs that require us to spend the money, the drivers of our capital program. The major one is our, the county's MS4 NPDS permit, which is given to us by MDE and the federal EPA. And it basically allows the county to discharge water from our storm drains into streams. Which go down into rivers, which go down into the bay. And of course, there's pollution in all that runoff and so there's lots of, lots of conditions that the state and the EPA put on us and requires to reduce those pollutants that are flowing down out of our storm drains. So we had a five, these permits, the NPDS permit and MS4 permit, or it's a five-year permit. And we just finished one in December of 2018. And for the last two years, we've basically had it administratively continued and we've been negotiating with both this MDE and the EPA over what would be in the new permit. And so we think we've got it nailed down and we're going to get our new permit sometime this spring. They just put it out, closed the public notice on it and, but there's new things in the new permit. In the new permit, we have to do impervious surface restoration. We have to restore 3,167 acres or the pollutants that would be equivalent to what would run off of that much impervious surface. We don't just dig up parking lots and things like that. We do projects that would be equivalent to restoring one acre of impervious surface, I'll explain that in a little bit. In our permit, it also has a Chesapeake Bay TMDL or Totemum, Total Maximum Daily Loads, which are pollutants. In the Chesapeake Bay TMDL, the pollutants are nitrogen, phosphorus and sediment. And then there are 26 local TMDLs or 26 local waterways that are polluted with certain pollutants. Many of which are the same nitrogen, phosphorus and sediment, but there's some unique ones. There's some old, some legacy pollutants that we have to try to fix. Mercury, which comes from air pollution. Chloride, which was used for a lot of pesticides in the past and has been banned for many years. And PCBs, which was used a lot, Monsanto used it in almost everything, but it ended up being a major contributor in transformers. But there's a giant lawsuit that some people on the West Coast, some counties and states on the West Coast sued Monsanto who made 98% of the PCBs. And we joined in that lawsuit with Baltimore City, we were the pioneers on the East Coast. And it was eventually settled and the county is going to get at least $8 million towards our program because of pollution that Monsanto putting PCBs into waterways in Baltimore County. So Brady, if you'd like to go to the next one. Okay, and here's, here's the major things we spend, when I said we spend 20 or 30 million dollars a year on reducing pollutants related to those permits, these are the historic and the things we spend most of the money on, stream restoration projects. Shoreline stabilization, protection. Reforestation, planting trees. And then upgrading old stormwater management facilities into new things and I'll, I'll give you a little example of each of those. We want to go to the next one. So stream restoration, stream restoration is where we spend a lot of money, we get a lot of credit on these permits. Many of our stream restoration projects take two or three or four years to do. It takes a long time to pick up stream that needs work. And then we have to hire a consultant to design a stream restoration project. Then they have to go and develop the plans and get the permits to work on that stream and then from the state and the feds also. Then we actually have to go build it. And all that takes time and it might take two or three or four years on each one of these projects. So when we're building our capital budget, we have to think in terms of collecting money over several years. In order to actually do that. So we put a little bit in every year for different types of projects, but we're also looking out three, four, five, six years out budget wise. And how we're going to spend our money. So when we started the last permit five years ago, it cost about $250 for every linear foot of stream restoration that we did. By the end of that five-year permit, it was $750, it was three times higher. And that's how you get credit, you get more credit for each linear foot that you do of stream restoration. So the reason for that, the cost going up is because every other counties and other cities, Baltimore City in particular has the same permit that we do, and so there's competition for the, there's only so many consultants, there's only so many construction companies that can build these types of things. But our stream restoration program is really, really good, we've been doing it a long time. We did it before we actually had the permits from the state and the feds. And the US Army Corps of Engineers from the Midwest has examples of Baltimore County projects on their website. And they actually bring people here to show them our projects. So we must be doing something pretty good. So next project, next page. So the shoreline jobs, when I say we do shoreline jobs, Baltimore County has 200 miles of shoreline. And with wind and wave action blowing up against it, you get places where it's very eroded. In some places, fetch is what is the distance that wind blows across in a straight line. There's places where we have Baltimore County that are on the bay where we have a 20-mile fetch, so lots of wind builds up, lots of energy comes across and erodes and you know, makes little cliffs along the shoreline sometimes. So these projects are actually very good. When I said we have a bay TMDL nitrogen, phosphorus and sediment. Putting, fixing shorelines so they don't erode and planting, you could plant grasses out in the water, you could plant scrub, shrub, wetlands along the edge of the water, you could plant trees behind that on the shoreline. All of those plants take up a lot of nitrogen and this is the best way to reduce nitrogen in the bay. Nitrogen that washes off from fertilizers, nitrogen that comes from leaking septic systems. Doing shoreline jobs, you get a lot of bang for your buck. So it really just depends on what kind of plant you put in, how much nitrogen you get reduced. But we do a really good job of this. Next slide please. And of course, when I said planting trees, we plant trees everywhere. Our tree planting program is excellent. We plant trees for the Forest Conservation Act, but we also plant trees just to get MS4 credit. If you plant 100 trees per acre. So for every, I said we had 3,000 acres of impervious surface we have to restore. Every 100 trees we plant is equivalent to restoring the pollutants from one acre. So we do lots and lots of jobs, we do urban jobs, small jobs in closer to the city, we do jobs out in the country. But we've used up, we've been doing this for so long, we've used up all the obvious places. We do this a lot on public property. We've planted all the wrecking parks properties, we've planted all the DPW properties, the things from property management. The school system, when I go to the school system and I say, hey, can I plant on the school? You know, sometimes they look, they come back to me and they say, Dave, we'd love to help you, but we need this area to plant trees for the Forest Conservation Act when we build new schools. So we've used up all the obvious places and we're really having to reach out into communities in northern Baltimore County to try to get new, new places to plant. We're currently also working with the Revenue Authority to do projects there with them. Next slide. So the other big thing we usually do is stormwater management. Stormwater management, we take old stormwater management ponds and we use new technology to make them better and to reduce more pollutants. Stormwater management came into effect in 1984, I think. And back then it was dig a hole, water goes in one side, water comes out the other side. That doesn't reduce a lot of pollutants. We go back and take those old ponds and there's maybe 4,000 ponds in Baltimore County, 2,000 of them are privately owned and 2,000 of them are owned by the county. So we take the ones that we own and we go back and we retrofit them. And I actually have people in my department, engineers and natural resource specialists that do these designs in-house for me. And they save a lot of time and they save, I'm going to say, millions of dollars every year by doing it in-house. So what we do is we take and if you had just a big crater with nothing in it, we put plants in it. We put things in it that can reduce the pollutants. We're actually working with Century Engineering on something they've invented called Smart Watershed, I mean smart stormwater. And what that is, is they have gates that they put in these stormwater management ponds. And one of the problems with the water is it heats up really a lot in the summertime, it gets to 90 degrees in the pond and when it discharges into the stream, it kills all the things in the stream because it's too hot. So Century thought, let's put a gate in there and hold the water back and not let anything out until it's coolest. So when is it coolest? In the summertime. It gets sun on it all day, but as nighttime rolls around, it starts decreasing temperature and the coolest part, the coolest time of day is right before dawn. So we put a computerized gate on the pond and we open it up right before dawn to let the coolest water out at the coolest time of day. So we're working, we're partnering with Century, we're actually applying for a NOAA grant to try to do this and work on flooding events also with stormwater. So there's a lot going on in stormwater management. And this, you also get a lot of credit for this because you got a lot of, put the plant material in there and you can take up a lot of pollutants. So again, this is, these are the guiding documents that we use. The NPDS permit that we get from the state and EPA. Phase two whip, it's the Watershed Implementation Plan that was prepared by the state of Maryland to the EPA. And that includes also the Chesapeake Bay TMDLs. We have local TMDLs. Again, 26 local impairments ourselves. And then we also do, we have small watershed action plans that we, we work with communities on and get their input on what they think needs to be done. Next slide. This is just to show you some of the costs that involve, and really look at the bottom there. Starting in FY21, we had $50 million available this year to do these kinds of projects. A lot of that's carryover money. We get again, between 20 and 30 million dollars a year. But we build it up over time, so actually this year we have $50 million available. Our projections for FY22, 23, 24, 25 and 26 are there on the bottom. And you'll notice they're just a little over $20 million a year of projects that we have planned and we think that's going to be our needs when we get to that point in those years. That's how far out we're looking. So we do it for the capital budget for you guys, we have to report to the state about five or six years now also. So that's just to give you a snapshot of what we're thinking in future years. Next slide. Steve Lafferty is now Director of Planning. He asked last year that we put this in when he was the sustainability czar, let's call him. And so but what are we doing here? Our projects are all done for sustainability purposes. I have listed across the top the types of projects. Going down the left side, I have sustainability issues that we wanted to see how they dovetail. We have flooding, we have riverine flooding, we have sea level rise, severe weather, protective measures and then temperature increase and how each of our projects sort of dovetail on that. The reason we do these projects is for sustainable purposes. Next slide. So this is just a quick look at where some of our projects are, this is where the stream restoration projects are that we've done here in Baltimore County. You'll notice they're all sort of around the urtal line or inside the urtal because that's where we own property. So we do a lot of, have done a lot of those on publicly owned properties. Next slide. This is where we've done the shoreline jobs, the dark orange there are where we've done shoreline stabilizations and plantings all along the 200 miles of shoreline of Baltimore County. And again, the state gives us as part of our permit, a Chesapeake Bay TMDL to reduce pollutants and these jobs go a long way towards reducing pollutants for that. Next. This is all the places we plant trees, all over the county, public lands, some on private lands. In northern Baltimore County, sometimes there isn't any place to restore impervious surface, there isn't any impervious surface, it's farms, it's woods. Mr. McGinnis, you know, there's nothing up there to really work on. So the only way we can really get equivalency to reduce pollutants is to plant more trees. So we're constantly running around trying to find more places to plant trees. That just gives you a snapshot of all the different places. We're trying to develop a website that's going to show all of these projects on all the different, different layers, sort of like this, to show you could zoom into your neighborhood and see what's going on in your neighborhood. We're working on that right now. Next slide. And these are the stormwater management projects that we've upgraded. Again, notice they're all around the urtal line in the developed areas. We don't have a lot of stormwater management ponds floating around in northern Baltimore County. So at the end of the day, when we get to northern Baltimore County, really the only thing we can do is plant more trees. Next slide. So these permits that we have, when I said we had a permit for the last five years and it was continued and now we're about to get a new one. Here's some of the stuff in the new one real quickly. Again, in the red there at the top, 3,167 acres of impervious surface that we have to restore the pollutants or fix the pollutants that would come off that much land area and we have five years to do it. So we think it's going to go through. It's the two years that it was administratively continued plus five, so it's going to go up through, this current new permit will go through 2026. Our first, our last five-year permit, we've restored 6,000 acres. This one says we only have to restore 3,000 acres. It looks like it's a great deal, it looks like we only have to do half the work, but. But they changed all the crediting guidelines. So we have a revised accounting rules on how we, how we do things. So at the end of the day, it's going to be a wash. The rules are going to be much harder to get credit. But we only have about half as much as we, impervious surface that we have to do. So next slide. What's new? What are the new things that they're, they're giving us credit for over those, not just the usual four big things we do? Here's some new stuff. Floating treatment wetlands. You may see them, if you've seen them down in the harbor, they have them floating around in the inner harbor right now. Forest conservation. We were required to do forest conservation for develop, development and plant more trees, but we never got any credit for it. As long as you're planting trees, now they're going to give us credit for that. This permit, again, isn't just our permit. It's a permit for the whole counties, not just a DEPS permit. It involves public works, it involves schools, it involves property management, it involves permits approval and inspections. It just crosses so many different departments that contribute to these things. If you look at the bottom there under revised, it says, street sweeping must document higher street sweeping frequency with upgraded equipment. What that basically means is the street sweepers that we have aren't collecting the right kind of pollutants. We're collecting coarse particles in our street sweepers and they have new ones that collect really fine particles. And they're not going to give us credit unless we use the ones that are really fine particles. So we have to decide if we want to continue with that or if we're going to go out and buy all new equipment that might cost us, you know, $500,000. Next slide. Here's something new. Salt management. Salt's a big problem. The permit will say, the county shall reduce the use of winter weather de-icing and anti-icing materials without compromising public safety by developing a county salt management plan. Salt, you salt the roads, the snow melts, it rains, it all washes downhill into streams, it washes into the reservoirs, the water that we drink. It's a big problem. The reservoirs are very contaminated. Many of the streams are very contaminated with chlorides. It's a problem. They want, our Department of Public Works has realized this for the last couple of years. They've been buying new equipment that has trackers on it and has different, they can control the amount of salt. They're using much less salt than they used to, maybe a third less, one-third of what they used to use. And down the road, according to this permit, we're going to have to have a salt academy to train county staff and a lot of private contractors that we use. And we're also going to have an education outreach component. We're going to have to talk to residents to try to get them to do it. So this just shows you, this is a component, it's not my department. This is all going to be on Public Works. But we work very closely with them to coordinate it, make sure that they keep track of these things. Next slide. And last but not least, just to show you how it applies to all county departments, there's a good housekeeping plan. So they want us to keep track of places, anywhere that vehicle equipment is stored, whether the county uses fertilizers or pesticides or landscaping, where we do those kinds of things, where hazardous materials might be stored at the landfills, at where property management has, things they do maintenance with, where Public Works has maintenance facilities. They want us to have a plan on how to do good housekeeping and control the stormwater. And how are we protecting those? And how are we training the people that are using all that stuff? Fortunately, all this new stuff isn't due in the very first year or this year. This won't kick in until the third year. But there's lots of new stuff. And we're going to have to adjust some of our spending to try to address some of that new stuff, but that's basically where we're spending your capital dollars that you give us. And again, it's about 20 or 30 million dollars a year. With that, I will open it up if you have any questions.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Scott. Yeah. I, I think you mentioned salt is one of the big problems. When I was in high school, they did not salt any of the roads. Then they started the hills. Then they started crossroads. Now they are salting every little road in the county. And why? Because some of the people moved out there complaining. Well, our people out here have snow tires. They have ability to go and on these roads with a little bit of snow and ice. And I think it's just been overdone. And just because a few people complain.
I do not disagree with you at all. And I think Mr. Blades, if he's still here, he has to pay the bills for us putting all the salt down. And it really is a problem. It's actually in the reservoirs now. And there are people that have heart conditions that can only use so much sodium in their water, right? And so the city is having trouble treating this and making sure that we get even a good water supply. And are you there anywhere? But I know the Department, Department of Public Works has been working over the last several years to really pare back and scale back what they're doing and trying to develop industry standards for a lot and we do, there's a lot of state roads in Baltimore County. The state, you know, puts a lot of salt down and private contractors also.
Dave, I do, I do cringe. I do cringe whenever we're going to have a snowstorm. So two this week is not going to be great for the budget.
It's not great for the budget, but it's all, it's just, it's not great for the environment and but I know you guys have been working on it and you've been working with Public Works to really, really try to pare it down. Not just from a cost standpoint, but also from the environmental standpoint.
And those
I feel a lot of people that can't get out on a snowstorm and they have two choices, stay home or drive slowly. Most of them have four-wheel drive vehicles anyway.
I'd like to say that my community association, we have a small watershed community committee. We collect samples from four streams every month and test them. And since we've been doing that since September of 2019, we have firmly established that the salt runoff is significant. You can really see the chart peaks when this, in a snow event. So, you know, we can, we can testify to that firsthand. As far as the impervious surface is concerned, you say there's over 3,000 acres that you're, you know, you have a formula for tree replacement. Does that 3,000 acres include projects which are currently under development or approved for development?
No, this is something separate. This is again, the state and the EPA are requiring us to restore the pollutants that would come off of 3,000 acres of impervious surface. It's an equivalency thing. So they're trying to figure out when they give these permits to different counties and different cities, how much, what would be fair for Baltimore County, what would be fair for Baltimore City, Montgomery, PG? So they, they do it in equivalencies and they say 3,000 acres and here's how much pollution would run off. But if you plant 100 trees, that will be equivalent to restoring the pollution from one acre of impervious. So I'd have to do 3,000 times 100 trees if I was going to plant it all in trees. But it's not just that. It's also the stream restoration. X number of feet of stream restoration equals one acre of impervious surface restoration. Are you following what I'm talking about? Development is separate. Development, this is not development. This is a, a permit that the state gives us that lets Baltimore County use their storm drain system and discharge into the waters of the state. It really isn't related to development. Development, development creates impervious surface.
Right.
The other half of my, the other half of my department, the stormwater management group in my department reviews every development plan that comes in and requires them to do stormwater management.
Yes, I understand.
That's a separate, that's a separate group than the group that's working on this.
I guess, I guess I'm just recognizing that it's a vicious cycle of creating more impervious surface with a limited number of acres that can be reforested.
Right. But also when, when a new project comes in, they're required to do stormwater management to mimic what would run off natural land if there was no impervious there at all. So they have to hold a certain amount of water and for a certain amount of time. And they also have to create things that will reduce the pollutants for every development. So there's, there's stormwater management. And then, and also this is a separate thing that we're doing planting trees. There's also something called the Forest Conservation Act. So every development that comes in, the state mandates that they have a certain amount of forest on each development. And if they don't have enough forest, they have to plant more. If they cut down too many trees, they have to plant more. So those are development regulations and those are things related to new development.
And last, I'm, I'm the district four appointee and I just can't praise highly enough how beautiful the Scotts level stream restoration is on Offutt Road. It is, should be a model for stream restoration.
Well, guess what? It is. That is the project that they bring, Army Corps of Engineers brings people to see.
Well, it's, it's deserved. Thank you.
Can I ask, how, how do they measure? Or do they measure for the county the amount of, you know, farm waste spread on fields and, and the nitrogen and is that part of the calculation, just like salt and drains?
Okay. So it's part of the state's calculation. So this ultimately, this whole permit thing comes from a lawsuit. They, they said these private groups sued the federal government and said, you're not doing the Clean Water Act correctly. You are polluting the bay. And so they won the lawsuit. And so EPA had to come back and say, all right, what are we going to do to improve water quality in the bay? So they divided up a certain amount of pollution for each state that drains into the bay. And they said Pennsylvania, you have to do this much. New York, you have to do this much. And you have to do this much. The state of Maryland has several sectors that they have to reduce pollutants in. One is urban stormwater and that's what I do. Another one is the sewage treatment plants and we spent hundreds of millions of dollars upgrading the sewage treatment plants. A third one is the ag sector. So there is an actual, the state gives, the same things they're giving to me, requirements, they give to the agricultural community and they require them to handle things like nutrient runoff. I'm sure Mr. McGinnis could give you a chapter and verse on things that he has to do through the soil conservation district to reduce pollutants from him. So I'm not the one responsible for the farms, but there is a giant sector of farming that is responsible in the same type of permit that was responsible to the state.
I might add, Scott, that the persons that spread liquid manure are required to inject it into the soil. And those that have stable manure with straw, it helps to cover and protect it and with, with crops that are grown on to help save the, these help to protect it too. So we are, we are mandated, in the wintertime, frozen ground, we can't spread manure anyway. And so there are a lot of safety guards in place. And with no till also, we don't have a lot of tilled ground.
Other questions for Mr. Lichen? Hearing or seeing any, I want to thank you for your presentation. I'm sure we all, all appreciate it. Always interesting to see the different. I guess I do have one quick question. How many, how much of stream restoration do you, does your agency do a year?
Well, again, because it takes three or four or five years, some years are heavy on building the projects and some years are heavy on designing the projects. Last, in 2019, we, we actually did nine major stream restoration builds. We always have in the queue ones that we're, we're working on designing and ones that we're getting ready to take the permit. Last year was a big year with nine is a big year. On average year, we maybe do six.
I mean, and how much, how, how, you know, are they?
Oh, that, maybe. I, I would say a small one might be 1,000 feet, linear feet, but we also have ones that are up to 7,000. We've done 7,000. We just finished one on Windermere Parkway last year. Up past, if you go out to Laney Valley Road, go past where Pierce's is, the next stream that you come through that crosses the road on Windermere Parkway, if you turn right back into that neighborhood, that was about 7,000 feet.
Maybe an average of 30,000 to 40,000 square feet a year?
Yes, I'd say so. Yeah.
David, thank you so much. You did a wonderful job. I appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Thank you. Okay. Our next presentation, Mr. Rob O'Connor from the Office of Information Technology.
Good evening, sir. Thank you. This is the first time that Office of Information Technology has had the opportunity to present. Chris, are you going to be driving the slide deck, please?
Yes, I'll pull it up for you.
Okay. This will be brief. This is only five slides, so I'm sure you all enjoy that. Okay. So good evening, everyone. A little quick background for you. The Office of Information Technology is a centralized IT department. And what I mean is that we are actually the IT department for every single agency here in the county. And that is not a standard around local government especially. So every IT initiative and project is managed through this department. And there is a process in which we work with each of the agencies to determine which projects will move forward. The reason that we did centralize the IT department roughly about a decade ago was for better standardization across the IT ecosystem, which created obviously efficiencies and not only implementations, but also in the ways that we were spending our funding dollars. The secondary, I guess, outcome of this, and one of the greatest outcomes of this is that we were able to also enhance our security platform throughout the county. And I think that's one of the things that, especially in today's world, has become one of the strengths of our IT department and one of the most critical to keep county processes and services running. What we did, since we did centralize the IT department, next slide, please, sorry, is we created what are called customer relationship managers to work with each of the business areas throughout the county. Areas like land management and public safety. As the IT initiatives and groups were pulled out from the agencies, it was identified that obviously we still had to have a tie-in and a relationship with the agencies to understand their business needs. That way we are able to gather information on any types of mandates, strategic initiatives and agency goals that had IT initiatives behind them. What we do is we, we have a process in which we have many standing meetings that each area, we get together, discuss the project request. It's through these meetings that the projects are sized based on their level of effort. We determine which county strategic goals will be met. We're then, they, we then rank them by their priority. Then we determine resource availability and funding needs that will be required in the upcoming fiscal years. Typically, when we put together this portfolio, we are dealing with many funding sources. So when we present this to the county administrator and to the director of budget and finance, we work through it in the prioritization to be presented to the county executive for final approval on which projects will impact the county the most and align with strategic goals for each fiscal year ahead. We are typically funded through, next slide, we are typically funded through what is called a technology fund. We, we call this a capital funding request, but it is actually through the general funds that these dollars come. Each year we typically try and keep our technology fund request around $7 million. That has been a standard for the past several years and for each of the upcoming years. Obviously, as projects and mandates change, these dollars flux a little bit. For example, within the past year, this is a small sampling of projects that were completed. One was the replacement of the entire police record management system. This was necessary due to a mandate that was initiated, called the National Incident-Based Crime Reporting Standards. This is a reporting standard to the state and federal for police crimes. The current system, or sorry, the previous system that we had was incapable of reporting on these guidelines. So we had to replace the system. These are typical things that obviously happen throughout the ecosystem and IT as mandates change, things become end of life and obviously systems just need to be replaced. Another example is the case management system that we implemented for the Department of Aging. They were actually doing everything on paper. So this agency was quite happy to get this new system. But this is just phase one of a multi-phase approach for a system to monitor, track and refer and report on senior participation through the Baltimore County Senior Centers. The next project, which is one of the largest that we are undertaking right now, is a complete replacement of our ERP system, which is Enterprise Resource Planning. Typically, you'll, you'll know Typically, you'll you'll know this as your HR systems and your financial systems in the county. As you can imagine, this is a an enormous undertaking and a large investment. Um, this is where the county has made determinations that just because we are a local government doesn't mean that's part of my bluntness, that we we should be going out and buying what I used to call the best of the worst. Um, we need to be competitive, just like private industry is, and making sure that we are buying best of breed systems. This administration agrees wholeheartedly with this uh in order to provide uh efficient and um effective services to our constituents. We need systems that are responsive um and systems that we can maintain data accuracy and flow throughout every agency. This new financial system and HR system will take two years to implement as one of our largest uh capital uh investments through FY twenty one and upcoming FY twenty two. Um, another project that is used here as an example is the implementation of an enterprise asset management system. Um, although the Department of Public Works has been tracking their assets for uh nearly two decades through the consent decree, uh the last system was sunsetted. In fact, it was sold off and needed to be replaced. We went with a uh enterprise best solution to implement a new system to manage work orders, um scheduling of maintenance and able to project county uh infrastructure assets uh for years to come for anticipated replacement cycles. Um, these are only four of, you know, a a large number of projects. Um and I'm obviously not going to go through all of them. But just for reference, uh currently, major projects, we have sixty-six in our portfolio for the current year. Uh forty-five of them are active and another twenty-one of them are in the queue. Uh, we also do smaller projects. We have eighty-one in in our portfolio, thirty-two are active, forty-nine are in queue. And just for an example, in twenty twenty, we completed a hundred and sixty-eight of the smaller projects as well. So if you can imagine, especially through COVID, the IT department has been extremely busy. Um, when we started March, uh the middle of March in twenty twenty, we had about three hundred people working from home. And in three weeks, we were able to have three thousand people working from home successfully. And it was because we are a centralized IT department and because we have standardization across ecosystem, we were able to do this securely and safely for our agencies. Uh, next slide, please. Our FY twenty-two uh IT pro uh project portfolio request for capital funding consists of seventeen different projects. Um, examples of these are, I'll actually go through these, is the continuation of the completion of the ERP system, which was that HR and financial system that I referred to earlier. Um, there are three different funding mechanisms or requests or projects in FY twenty-two. One is for the baseline completion of the project. Um, there is a second request for a phase two, which will be an implementation of a learning management system. Um, and also a talent platform for succession planning, career pathing and recruiting. Um, and then on the next slide, which don't go to yet, sorry, Chris, um you'll see another project, which is for performance budgeting. Um, uh piece of the uh platform. Uh broadband fiber uh is an ongoing project. There's a uh seven hundred fifty thousand dollar capital request for our broadband initiatives. Uh, about ten years ago, we uh entered into an agreement with a consortium of nine central counties. And we were we were awarded fourteen million dollars. Each year, we've been investing into that uh platform, and we have built fiber out um over two hundred and fifty miles of fiber throughout Baltimore County, connecting over three hundred facilities, including um we're almost completed all of the public schools uh within Baltimore County. Um, there has been substantial million dollar uh multimillion dollar savings in no longer requiring the use of third-party services such as Comcast and Verizon to these facilities. And we are also actually the paid carrier for Baltimore County Public Schools as we uh won a competitive bid through Baltimore County Public Schools as we provide ethernet service to every single school. Some of these dollars are also being utilized and leveraged towards our initiatives to conquer digital divide throughout Baltimore County. Um, crossing through serviceability, affordability and digital literacy. Uh, next, uh project you'll see is a project that no no year would be better than now is the replacement of our public health record system. Um, the current system has served us well, but is aging, and it is time for either an upgrade or replacement of that system. Um, the next project doesn't seem that interesting, but it is for our Department of Corrections. There are over the air um TVs throughout every housing unit in the Department of Corrections. The system is over fifteen years old, was implemented when that new new quote unquote new facility was built. Um, these TVs are failing, and as you can imagine, this is one of the things that obviously uh help keep uh the individuals that are incarcerated there occupied during downtime. Um, it's another project which seems small, fifty thousand dollars is for the Department of Corrections and Sheriff's uh for skills manager software. Um, this is a movement of their on-base system into the cloud. This is a system that does their training and also tracks their um certifications. Uh, we are requesting um two hundred and sixty thousand dollars to a police funding. Um, up through a police fund for a personnel scheduling software for the police department. Um, content management workflow development, two hundred and fifty thousand dollar request. We have been working towards digitizing millions of different documents that we have throughout the county. Obviously, COVID and just to push towards better technology, we are trying to eliminate paper process. But uh in doing so, we have decades and decades of documents that are still utilized daily, especially in departments like planning, um environmental protection and permits and inspections. Uh, land use regulatory automation, this is one that developers and also uh residents will be thrilled to see. This upcoming September, we will go live with all online permitting. So there will no longer be what we used to call the game of chutes and ladders to get a permit in Baltimore County, where you had to go from building to building to apply for, pay for and complete permit uh requests. You'll be able to do all this online. It'll be digitized, transparent, and you will be able to track your requests. Next slide, please. Uh, we are implementing or requesting funds to implement a Wreckin Parks Participation Registration and Payment Portal for Wreckin Parks activities. Uh, we are requesting funding for a compliance inspection uh application for permits and reporting. Uh, this was the one I had mentioned earlier for performance budget. It's called adaptive planning for projecting uh future budget cost. Uh, we are requesting funds for replacing the DPW Pipeline and Manhole Video Inspection System. The system is seventeen years old and is still working effectively, but is obviously sunsetting and needing replaced. We are ma- migrating off of our mainframe. This should be the last year that we request any migration funds. Uh, the mainframe has served us well for decades, but obviously is a costly platform as we shrink the number of applications that are currently run on the mainframe. We look to sunset this in the next eighteen months with our tax system will be the final application moving off of that. One of the net new requests this year is cybersecurity. We have always vest invested in cybersecurity typically through a fund called our a uh um, sorry, our uh wow, slipping my mind. The if anybody wants to chime in, but I can't remember what it's called, our EFP, Equipment Finance Package, sorry. Um, but obviously cybersecurity is on the forefront of all of our minds as we saw what uh occurred for uh for the Baltimore County Public Schools and also GBMC locally. Um, no one is one hundred percent protected. It is the defenses that you build. It is educating your end users and is the ability to recover if you are ever compromised. So these dollars will be wisely invested into systems and protections for county assets and data. Finally, it's phase two for the Department of Aging for the case management system uh that was referred to and is currently working in the current fiscal year of FY twenty-one. We always request a contingency of five hundred thousand dollars um within the capital uh request for tech funds due to any initiatives that may occur between the time that the budget is approved and obviously throughout the fiscal year, whether it is a mandate or an emergency. And any questions?
Thank you very much. Appreciate that.
Um, Rob. Will there be accommodation for electronic a payment for electronic copies of development plans or other plans from permits? Instead of going down and getting gigantic paper copies?
That that is something we are working on creating what we call a document management center. Um, the request moving forward when we go live next year with this new system is obviously anything that's going to be submitted is going to be uh required to be submitted digitally. And what we are doing is any current plans that we have and past plans that we have for decades is we are digitizing those. And we are looking to make those available online. Um, Dave, if you want to chime in, uh if any thing you feel there is different, I don't know if Dave Liggins is still on this call or not. But that is our plan.
Will will there be a cost?
That has not been determined, and I hate to say that that's not an IT determination. That'll be something that the agencies and obviously the executive and council will have to discuss.
Thank you.
Scott, I have one question. Rob, is um is is your roughly eight million dollar budget, is is that in the um the appropriation summary? Is it a separate line item or is it embedded in every department's budget? Your your budget?
Uh, it's it's a tech for fun is in our budget, our request, not each uh each agency's. Um Ed Blades can also comment on that.
So Ben, if you look in the uh, if you look in the capital, you probably have a capital budget book by now. Uh, there's a capital project. It's two-ten P zero-one-eight. It's called Enhanced Productivity Through Tech Fund or Through Tech Technology. We internally call it the tech fund, but that's it's the uh Enhanced Productivity Through Technology is the name of the capital project, and it's within the request. Currently, currently, I believe there's seven million dollars sitting there, so we still have to work up. We have to work through finding the difference. And Robin, I've been talking about uh solutions for that.
Okay, that was going to be my question. Thank you.
Other questions for Mr. Connor?
Rob, uh you've done a wonderful job. I can't even imagine what you've had to go through this last year. And you've kept the county going, and we greatly appreciate it.
Thank you, Nancy. I actually have to give all the credit to the IT department. And I can tell you that my department is very well aware of all of our frontline workers, our health department, fire and police. So we have been working tireless hours and and days, but every time that we look up and we see what the other departments are having to do and what they're challenged with, it ma- it makes it kind of a motivation for my department to keep pushing forward. But thank you, Nancy.
Well, living here and working here, I see it all the time. I see you all the time, so I really appreciate you've you've gone the extra mile.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. All right, our last two presenters are from the Department of Planning. Um, I'd like to invite Megan Benjamin to present to her presentation on land preservation.
Uh, thank you and good evening, Madam Chair, uh Mr. Committee Chair and all the members of the planning board. Chris, uh I guess I will rely on you. There we go. I see it loading. So I am a northern sector planner in the Department of Planning, and I will be presenting tonight on the Capital Improvement Program for Land Preservation. You can go to the next slide when you're ready. So just a brief background, uh the Master Plan twenty twenty called uh has a goal to create and maintain safe and sustainable communities to achieve a sensible balance of economy, equity and environment for people to reside, work, raise families and enjoy amenities in Baltimore County. Next. So there were objectives uh both for the urban management areas and the rural management areas. The focus in the urban areas was on economic development, public safety, education and community conservation. And then uh for the rural lake, for the rural areas, the focus on um the agricultural industry, uh environmental sustainability, protecting the natural beauty and resources and waterfront recreation. Next. Drilling down uh to the land preservation objective, the um this was based on preservation uh at the rate of twenty-one hundred acres uh year protected and a loss or conversion rate of eight hundred seventy acres per year. And so it was projected at these rates that we would meet the at least eighty thousand acres of permanently protected uh land by the year twenty twenty-two. This is a good news and bad news slide. Um, the good news is that the loss or conversion rate was not as high as predicted. Uh, but the bad news is that we were not able to match that predicted rate of twenty-one hundred acres per year preserved. Uh, next slide. So here you can see we have been making progress over the last ten years. Uh, and our average rate is just shy of nine hundred acres preserved uh each year. At the end of twenty twenty, we are, we stand at sixty-seven thousand seven hundred forty-four acres permanently preserved. So we're about at eighty-five percent of our goal of eighty thousand acres. And next slide. So uh this graph represents um demonstrates that if we are able to increase our pace even slightly, that we will be uh obviously able to achieve our goal sooner rather than later. The um to the left is what uh we have actually achieved. The green line uh on the lower side, that represents keeping pace at nine hundred acres per year. The uh spruce green line uh that increases the rate, that is if we are able to bump up just slightly to, this is at twelve hundred acres a year. So obviously, if we're able to advance even a few years, uh are the time in which we are able to meet our goal, that would um be beneficial because of course we are always working against the um the loss and the conversion of lands at the same time. And then next slide. So Baltimore County is um fortunate to have a number of programs that we utilize to work towards our goal. The Maryland Agricultural Land Preservation Foundation, MOUTH for short, has always been a reliable um way that we get preserved acres in the county. Uh, currently, we have about thirty-five to forty percent of our total preserved acres are with the MOUTH program, which the county has always uh utilized to get all of these state dollars into the county that we can. Maryland Environmental Trust is the primarily donated conservation easement program with the state. Baltimore County um has been very successful in having folks donate easements through MET. About um between twenty and twenty-five percent of our total protected lands are protected with Maryland Environmental Trust. And in fact, uh Baltimore County has the most acres of any jurisdiction in the state preserved through MET. We have uh the Rural Legacy Program, so uh with the state Rural Legacy Program run through the Department of Natural Resources, we have five designated Rural Legacy Areas in Baltimore County. Um, typically, we will see funding uh definitely always um at least in one of the Rural Legacy Areas, sometimes two and occasionally three of our Rural Legacy Areas uh bring in state uh state dollars to protect lands in those designated areas. In addition, we also have county funds that we use to um protect lands in these Rural Legacy Areas. And um we have been fortunate to be able to utilize those funds this past year. So we have several properties in the pipeline to be protected through the County Rural Legacy uh program. Investing county dollars in these Rural Legacy Areas also helps to boost the ranking uh at the state level. So the state looks to see what local investment uh and other dollars that are going into these Rural Legacy Areas. So any county dollars that are invested uh again help to boost the ranking and likelihood that more state dollars will come in. And uh one other thing back on that slide, sorry, we also have the County Ag Program that also are county dollars purchasing uh ag easements. So um again, we were able and fortunate to have money in this program this current fiscal year, and we are advancing uh several applications and farms to be protected through this program. All right, now you can go to the next slide. So this is our list of MOUTH projects that we have uh committed funds um currently. The four completed product projects were uh farms that were able to be uh completed and protected last calendar year, uh even with all of the delays and things related to COVID. Uh, we were pleased to see these move forward to completion. The Enzer, uh one of the few remaining dairy farms in the county. That one, I meant to check land records today. We're expecting that to move to the completed column uh any day now. And then these other six farms are also, uh we have the committed funds and we're moving towards completion of easements on those properties. So it's a great slate um that we're moving forward. And the next slide. So this uh here are just some photos. So here are just some photos of these properties that we have protected this past year. I'll point out on this slide, so with the Ag Census, the average size farm in Baltimore County is around 70 acres. And these farms all demonstrate that there are still some larger farms, great farms that we're happy to see protected through the MAF program. Next slide. So the MAF budget, it's always a priority to put county dollars towards the MAF program because the MAF program matches county dollars at a rate of 60 from the state and 40 from the county. So for every dollar that the county contributes, we get a dollar 50 back in matching funds from the state, up to $2 million of state matching funds. In addition, we also have general allocated funds that any jurisdiction in the state with MAF gets those funds regardless of if they match or not. So the 1.33 million that we put towards this program is certainly worth it in what we get back and the quality lands that we are able to preserve through this program. Next slide. So the County Ag Preservation Program, as I mentioned, these dollars are able to, as I already said, move towards county purchased ag easements. We have 13 easement applications that we're moving through council now. We brought in the applications last year. We have a million dollars currently this fiscal year and a million next year to use towards those. And then we have bond funds slated for the even years moving forward. This is the area where, you know, if the county does want to increase the pace of preservation, this is where we can really utilize those dollars. We're already getting, you know, putting all the money that we can towards the MAF program, but these are dollars that we can spend on our own to increase the acres and the rate of preservation. And next slide. The County Rural Legacy Program, this is another area where if we want to increase the pace, we could have money here. So we have a, currently in the pipeline, a fee simple acquisition in the coastal Rural Legacy Area. We have several easements put forth in the Piney Run Rural Legacy Area to utilize these dollars that we haven't utilized in a few years. Another important investment out of the Rural Legacy money is investment in the Baltimore County Land Trust Alliance. This is an umbrella group that was put together by the county and the local land trusts to coordinate their efforts to, you know, promote efficiencies of operations. And they have been extremely effective in bringing additional state preservation dollars into the county. So this modest investment with the Baltimore County Land Trust Alliance, we feel really, we get all that back and more for that investment. You'll also see we want to be able to invest in all of the Rural Legacy Areas in the county. So as I had mentioned before, state dollars usually only go to a couple of the Rural Legacy Areas. We want to be able with the County Rural Legacy Dollars to invest in all of the areas to move those priorities forward and to see more protected in those areas. And again, as I had mentioned, investing county dollars helps boost the chance that the states will rank these at a statewide level higher when they see local dollars being spent as well. Next slide. So as far as sustainability goes, land preservation certainly supports resiliency and sustainability in a number of ways. Just to point out a few highlights, both with the state and county ag programs, the requirement of conservation plans to ensure farming practices that protect soil and water quality is a boost to sustainability and resiliency. With the Rural Legacy Program, they require enhanced protections that help maintain the forest canopy and enhance the stream buffers on those easements as well. And then slide. So this is just a brief summary of some of the main sustainability functions. All of the programs obviously help to focus development inside of the Eardle, protect the areas outside of the Eardle, protect water quality of the reservoirs, protect large blocks of forest land for carbon storage and protect farmland and the local food supply. And the next slide. So how did we address citizen comments? So we've been able to, with the additional funds from the county executive and county council, as I mentioned, we've been able to add properties into our pipeline to be protected with those funds through the County Ag Program and the County Rural Legacy Program. And we are also exploring partnerships to help increase our pace of protection so that we can meet our goals most effectively. And that's the end of my presentation. I'm happy to address any questions there may be.
Thank you very much. Anyone have any questions?
I might add, Scott, that persons entering these programs are doing so out of the hopes to help the environment and help the county. And often they, if you have bidding process, they are not getting full value for maybe what they're giving up. And it's a great sacrifice that they're able to do it. And I just, we just have to watch that their waiting list is not too long and some of these people give up and do not enter the program. So I think on the pace that we were going originally before this program started, the effect on the county would have been terrible as far as waste management, pollution, efficiency and cost of the county. So we're very much indebted to the program.
Can I ask, how many acres are currently put into land preservation? And what percentage of that makes up of the total acreage of the county?
So I can tell you that we currently have 67,744 as of the end of the calendar year and what we count as permanently preserved properties through these easement programs. I don't know how that fits with the larger area of the county.
And what's the, I mean, my assumption or hope is that there's some cap on the amount of land that we're going to put in permanent preservation. So what's that?
So the goal is at least 80,000 acres of permanently protected lands in this program. I could get you a longer explanation of why it is at least 80,000 acres. But the short answer is that at some point that was determined to be the land base needed in order to create a viable and maintain a viable agricultural industry in the county. So we're 85% of the way there. So we still have a little ways to go.
When was that decided? What time did that?
So that has been, that number was created some time ago. I don't know exactly when, but that has been the goal for a number of years.
Has anybody looked at that to make sure that's still a viable number?
I can say that I know that it has been looked at from time to time. I think it's worth exploring where we are in terms of what lands are protected. Are they agricultural lands, forest lands? And I know that it has been looked at from time to time.
I can add that it was created under the Smith administration. I believe David Carroll was one of the architects and we were much slower as far as acreage preserved at the time. So we have made significant progress.
My concern is we're preserving too much land. So that would be my concern. So I'd love to see if we looked at that and seen how much we actually need today with where farming is today and the viability of farming.
Yeah, we're raising food so you can eat fresh local produce.
All your places to get that.
Thank you, Wayne. Thank you, Todd.
Thank you, Nancy.
Good surprise there.
To follow up on Mr. McGinnis's comment, how much, how long is a waitlist for property owners to get into the program?
So we have, we have several farms that have applied a number of years in a row. So I don't, you know, it is competitive each year depending on what farms apply. So I can't say a number, how many years it would take for any given farm to get in. But we do, we have, before the MAF program and county program, we have had 25 to 30 applications each year. We're able to move usually five or six forward with the MAF program. We're excited to be able to pick up a few more farms with the county program and then of course, with the Rural Legacy Funds as well with the county.
So out of the 25, 30 that come in every year, what's the total that we're able to accept?
So usually, so for the past few years, we've just had the MAF program. So of those, we can usually fund five, around five or six maybe if we're able to pick up another one with the county program. We hope to pick up, we have a million this year and a million next year. We would hope to pick up three to four or five more with that.
If I could just chime in real quick, the county executive actually doubled the referendum for the FY22 budget year. So it's 4 million between land pres and rural legacy. So there's 4 million in bonds available in '22, 5 million in '24 and 6 million in FY26. So the county executive did increase them.
I guess all I was also.
Sorry, I was just going to ask, is there a reason why there's no funding in 2023?
The referendum type basically goes every other year, every even fiscal year. So it's a two-year distribution, but it all goes into the first year.
So I guess what I was curious about, we're about 13,000, 14,000 acres short of meeting our 80,000 acre goal, correct?
Yes.
So of the farms that have sort of applied that haven't gotten approved, any sense how much, how much closer that could get us?
I don't have that offhand, but with the, so with the chart that I was showing, if we can bump it up, you know, we can, we're within striking distance of meeting our goal. But of course, we want to have quality applicants. So our outreach efforts are important to make sure that we're getting good candidates worthy of conservation through these programs.
Any other questions? Thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you.
Megan and Blades, thank you both so much. We greatly appreciate you coming out tonight. You've done a great job in a very challenging year.
Thank you.
And we have one last presentation to hear from tonight from Steve Lafferty to talk about immunity development.
Thank you, Scott. Chris, if you want to pull up the screen, the PowerPoint, please. So first of all, let me thank the entire board for not only your engagement for the last couple of hours, but for the questions as well. I just want to compliment Ed Blades and also Rob O'Connor. It's sort of an understatement that the kind of work that OIT has done during this pandemic to make sure that the government operates correctly and smartly, as well as Ed's vigilance in making sure that we all stay on the right track in a challenging budget time. I want to also thank Megan for her presentation. I think we often lose sight of the fact that ag preservation is really about preserving farms. It's not just preserving land, it's making sure that we have a strong agricultural economy, which has always been a vibrant part of the economy of the county. I'll be much briefer unless you have a number of questions and we can take those tonight or offline. Since the planning department works with communities throughout the county, we're very fortunate to have a few funding sources to also supplement and help support the neighborhoods where we're working in the business sector as well. Next slide, please, Chris. So the department and its community improvement initiatives are really guided by a number of documents. First of all, the master plan 2020. Second place, the enterprise strategic plan that was adopted in 2019 at the county executive's direction to lay out a number of goals and activities that agencies throughout the county are to address. Thirdly, has to do with housing and our voluntary compliance agreement and conciliation agreement that we entered into with the federal housing and urban development as a result of a lawsuit filed for our failure to comply with fair housing laws. Additionally, we have sustainable community plans throughout the entire county, as well as community plans that are present and have been adopted through the work of volunteers and neighborhoods from, you know, North County throughout Essex, Dundalk, Arbutus and other places. And then of course, we have a number of other regulatory requirements to guide our department direction and help us structure where we're going to spend some fun. I'm just going to point out a few of these this evening. Next slide, please, Chris. So let me just go next slide, please. One project that has been sort of limping along but has gotten renewed attention and energy is the Dundalk Heritage Trail and Park. The idea for this really came up almost 20 years ago through the engagement of almost 100 citizens in looking at what Dundalk's future should be. It was through an urban design assistance team effort that led to the recommendation to create this, really it was a technology trail, but it's called the Dundalk Heritage Trail to really celebrate the history and culture of Dundalk and the environment, but also to recognize the contributions that people have made to make it such a strong community. At the same time, creating connectivity for residents and also to provide some recreational and other opportunities in the community. This is lying dormant for, part of the project has been completed, part of it has not been completed. This has a renewed attention that we're going to be focused on in the upcoming year. Next slide, please. There are three facets that I want to point out regarding Economic Development Financing Fund. The first has to do with affordable housing. In the county's commitment to furthering fair housing and providing more opportunities for people to have housing in communities that are proximate to transportation and good schools, where there's economic opportunities and where we can also support people who are in the workforce but whose incomes may be modest. There is a fund, we use these funds to help encourage the development of housing units in opportunity areas throughout the county. This is partly and in part due to the voluntary consent decree, but it's also a recognition that citizens throughout the county need to have opportunities to be in decent housing, even if their incomes are modest. This is something that has been addressed in other master plans and will be an element certainly in the upcoming master plan. Next slide, Chris. Further, we use funding to provide modification. Further, we, we use funding to provide modifications to housing. So those people who otherwise do not have quality of life opportunities. Because as you can see from that middle slide, for instance, if you, you have a disability, you can't necessarily navigate steps. But you can also see the need to create internal modifications to houses, whether it's eliminating steps, widening doorways, lowering sinks, providing actually opportunities for those people who have physical disabilities to have ADA access. And also to make sure their quality of life is not impeded simply because of a physical limitation they may have. Next, please. The last one I'll comment out of this fund is Towson Row. This has provided significant incentives to, of economic investments to make sure that Towson's becomes a vibrant and really strong economic center for the county. The county has invested money starting back, I guess in twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen to stimulate not only this, but also to recognize that it has to be interconnected with the communities that it serves. So building on existing infrastructure, Towson Row has now, if I'm sure most of you, if you've driven past it, well, I guess since we're all virtual, many of you probably haven't been to Towson recently. That we've had apartments come out of the ground, a Whole Foods is under construction. There are beginnings of a new hotel. Things are going to really centralize the economic vitality of Towson itself. And so the investment here provides not only a mixed-use project, but also serve and connect the communities to the downtown in a different way. Next slide, Chris. And we have this other broad category of county-wide improvements. It's particularly focused on existing communities and funding community revitalization projects, streetscapes, sustainability initiatives and fostering economic revitalization. This, these funds are often used to match funds that we're able to get from the state or from other resources. Without this resource, we would not be as competitive for state funds such as Community Legacy or Bernie or others that we can make available to county communities, particularly within the Beltway. And it's really a vital sort of gap filler that we've been able to utilize in Pikeville and Towson and Dundalk and many other parts of the county, Liberty Road, Reisterstown, I can go on and on. Last slide, please, Chris. And this sort of captures the capital program requests that we have for FY twenty-two. And you can see the same items outlined and the budgets not only for twenty-two, but going forward. You know, as we are getting into the master planning process, it's going to be important to be able to recognize that these are resources that we're going to continually have to draw upon in order to maintain the quality of life that all of us come to see in the older communities particularly. So that's, that's it. A, a quick tour. Any questions?
How are we on the VCA from a progress standpoint?
Mr. Warren, I can get you, I can get you updated numbers on that. They actually just, I saw something come through my inbox today with current numbers. I think we're, we were behind in the last year, but we're catching up now. We continue to are getting inquiries from potential developers who are either looking to rehabilitate units or to take on new units, but I can, I'll get you an update.
Thank you.
Sure.
Other questions for him or we all meeting now?
I'm sorry, what Scott? I didn't hear you.
Oh, I was just asking if anybody else had any other questions or, you know, two hours of online have
And, and let me just, just say that if there are questions, certainly after tonight, whether for me or from the colleagues who spoke to the board, you know, please let us know, send those to Chris or to Crystal. You know, we'll follow up on your behalf. I know that it's two-hour slog is a little bit much by WebEx, but again, appreciate everybody's attention tonight.
Thank you, Steve. I appreciate everything your department's done. I know they've worked so hard. And this is a very challenging time. I mean, we have a lot of things, needs in the county. But each of us have special interests, but it's about the good of the all. And that's what we have to remember at the end of the day. It's about the good of the all.
Thank you, Nancy.
Thank you. So I think this brings us to the end of our presentations tonight. I want to thank you everyone for sticking around as, as this long. A reminder that we have another CIP meeting this Thursday, January twenty-eighth at five thirty. Not sure, I don't remember how many are presenting on, on Thursday. Hopefully it won't be another over two hour, but appreciate everyone's time and I look forward to seeing you on Thursday. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.